Second?
Roll call please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Stecady?
Yes.
Return to closed. The chair will entertain a motion to enter closed session to discuss personnel issues and student discipline. Roll call please. Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Canover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Stecady?
Yes.
Return to closed.
May seventeenth meeting of the Board of Education is resuming after closed session. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing on the bond issuance. This item for the Board of Education is a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposal to sell six million working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district. All persons desiring to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony. The reason for the proposed issuance of the working cash fund bonds are as follows. HVAC replacement and other priority capital projects. Are there additional comments from the Board of Education? Okay. Are there any public comments concerning the proposed issuance of the working cash fund bonds? All persons desiring to be heard have been given an opportunity to present oral and written testimony with respect to the proposal, proposed issuance of the bonds. Can I have a motion to adjourn the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And the hearing is adjourned. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And I will abstain. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and I will abstain again. The next item on the agenda is public comment. A public comment is a time for community members to address the board with comments and questions. Each community member addressing the board has five minutes. Once you've been notified, your time is up. Kindly step away from the podium. Public comments will be for thirty minutes total with no more than each subject lasting twenty minutes. This is not a time for engagement. The board will consider your comments in our decisions. For those comments or questions requiring follow-up, the board president or superintendent will follow up. Do we have any public comments? That's okay. Enjoying the music, that's okay. All right, public comment from Peggy Chupinski.
Hi, Mrs. Chupinski, a first grade teacher at Miller School, and I just wanted to give a big thank you to the Miller School PTO. I thought this needed to be done publicly because they are marvelous. So on behalf of the entire staff at Miller School, I'm here to thank the Miller PTO and all our volunteers for all their hard work this year and every year. We started out wanting to thank Lisa Lance and her Miller Ranch Hands, because last year we had a rodeo theme, for all they did during Teacher Appreciation Week. It was an amazing experience this year. They decorated Miller School from top to bottom in an Alice in Wonderland theme of falling through the rabbit hole, as Lisa said, dedicated to this very challenging year. What was especially nice is that the decorations were still up when the children, or when the children arrived on Monday, and their mouths were just gave in amazement at how wonderful everything looked. It was a wonderful surprise for everyone, and the staff truly felt appreciated. But thinking back over this year, our PTO does so much more for all the students, families, and staff throughout the whole year, starting even before the school year begins. This year, the event started with the elementary family fun night last August, a week before school even started. There have been events almost every month since, including classroom parties, Santa's workshop, and the upcoming talent show later this week, besides so much more. Shows just how dedicated and our volunteers are to Miller School. So we'd like to use this chance to give a huge heartfelt thank you to Lisa Lance. She is one of the most thoughtful, creative, energetic people I've ever known. Thanks, thanks to what she has done to get volunteers to come into the school and organizing our Miller Ranch Hands, our classroom volunteers, who support her in all her activities and all her creative endeavors. We truly feel blessed to have them as part of our Miller family, and thank you to all the volunteers who may not also be actively involved in the PTO. But they come in at different times throughout the year to help teachers at lunch and recess and other events and activities in the classrooms. So, while we would not have such a caring and fun environment in our school without all of these wonderful volunteers, and we look forward to our continued relationship with them, with all our families in the coming years. So, thank you for the opportunity to thank them.
Thank you so much, Peggy.
Thank you.
Okay, great. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Number one, personnel recommendations. Michael Lipinski, Assistant Principal, Westmont Junior High. Amy Quatron, Principal, Westmont Junior High. Megan Seaver, Math Interventionist, Manning. Anna Trippity, Second Grade Summer School Teacher. Rebecca Frye, First Grade Summer School Teacher. Robin Magnay, Fourth Grade Summer School Teacher. And then we have a leave of absence. Number two, approval of May twenty twenty-two expenditure report. Number three, ratification of the April twenty twenty-two regular payroll. And number four, approval of audit engagement.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Redonio?
Yes. And if I could, just real quick, I think it needs to be called out. Kevin, the board asked you to pay attention to band eighteen some months ago, and I was really happy to read on Michael's resume that he has a super strong band background. And I think especially at the junior high level, it's just, it's just a really, it's going to be a really great thing. So, I'm really happy that something that we talked about what feels like decades ago is still, is still thought of. So, thank you.
Oh, and on that note, there is a band downstairs that walked us in today. The band is down there representing themselves. Thanks to Ms. Beederman for that.
So if you're watching live, come hear them for the next couple of minutes.
Just very quickly, Mike Lipinski is here this evening.
Welcome.
Hi, Mike, welcome.
Congratulations.
Awesome. All right, next we have our items for information and discussion. Number one is the proposed student handbook revisions, the second reading.
Good evening, everyone.
Oh yes, so this is the second reading, and I'm here to answer any questions that you might have for elementary, junior high, or the high school.
I have a question with the junior high, and it's, I think it's just clarification for, you discussed this last time with how grades, how we review grades, where parents can review grades, and it's not in Skyward anymore. It will be in Otis?
Yes.
And then, just going down to, where is it? I think there's, oh yeah, just that line twenty-seven, or maybe it's page, just talking about the honor roll and the GPA at the end, and then it said, "Parents and guardians are urged to review updated grades in Skyward." I guess clarification that should be changed to Otis, because that will be, that GP, is that right? The GPA will be?
We're still going to use both. There'll still be Skyward and Otis, but they're trying to, from what I can understand, they want Otis to be like the main system of communication that houses everything.
So the parents should go to look at, if they're just looking at the GPA, they can go into Skyward, is that right?
No, they'll, they'll still use Otis for that. Yes, Paul?
I think, what? Yes.
Michael, the help.
Please, that's great.
I know the junior high.
The teachers are going to post the assignments and the assessments and the scores in Otis. So when teach, when, when parents want to review ongoing grades, it'll be in Otis. The Skyward system feeds into the sys system, the student information system for ISB, so the final grade has to be posted into Skyward, and this, and Skyward will calculate the grade point average.
So to get that, they go, that's what you're pointing out, okay.
Before you, before you go though, because I'm reading the same thing that Adina's reading, and it says, "Parents and guardians are urged to view updated grades in Skyward throughout the year." So if the grades are only going to be in Skyward at the end of the year, which is what I thought I just understood, then that should be changed to Otis.
Yes, the, the norm that we have for our parents to kind of check ongoing, our students' grades and assignments and assessment scores, that's now done through Otis.
Right.
So that statement that you just stated probably should be adjusted.
Yeah.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, we can make that adjustment then.
For the junior high?
For the junior high, that's.
Number twenty-seven.
I'm looking at the west.
Number twenty-seven.
Number twenty-seven.
Twenty-three has it, okay.
Under recognition and honor roll.
Under recognition, honor roll for twenty-seven.
You said you don't read things.
And we want that to say?
Otis.
Yeah, because it said, review upgraded grades throughout the year. So if you're looking for throughout the year things, that's Otis. But the end of the year, kind of GPA number will be at Skyward.
When the, later on, when the board approves the handbook changes, it'll be, it'll include.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so what I'll do is I'll take this recommendation back, share it with Amy, and then they can make the adjustment before it's provided to our, our team for print, basically.
Right.
Clear that confusion a bit.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, yes. Because it's a little different than what we have at the high school, and it's good to have clarification with that. Any other questions?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you for your time. I'll see you next year at the same time.
Maybe before then.
Maybe soon.
All right, the second item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three student fee. All right, the second item on the agenda is the 2022-2023 student fees.
At the last meeting, we talked about the student fee increases. So if you looked at the historical proposed fee schedule, you see that we have increases somewhere between two, to, to, to under three percent for our student fees at each of the grade levels. And those items are highlighted in yellow at the top. Then also highlighted in yellow is the tuition, the preschool tuition piece, which a ten percent increase because we have not increased that tuition since the program started in 2013-14. And then, there are three items that are highlighted in pink. Those increases are based on vendor pricing, on the cost to us to procure those items on behalf of students. And then, in terms of meals, we did raise the meal prices by ten cents. And the PLE, which is something that Francesca, our food service director, goes through that calculation. We don't have that yet. If something were to change and we needed to increase our prices more, we would come back to the board and present that. But for right now, we feel a ten percent increase is justified based on the increased cost of food going forward.
It's actually just a ten cent, not a ten percent.
Yeah, ten cents. Yep.
On the preschool, how many school weeks are there in a year?
Uh, it's ninety-six, I think.
School weeks, ninety-six days? No.
No.
I don't know how many school weeks are there.
Let me, uh... Uh, it's...
Like thirty-six or something like that?
That's kinda what I was, so, super back of the envelope, I just wanna make a call out for how much our preschool costs a day, right? Even with a ten percent increase, which seems like a ton, but a five-day program is three thousand dollars, it's two thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Assuming thirty-six weeks in a year, that's about eighty-three dollars a week. That's about seventeen dollars a day for preschool, which I think is...
It's a bargain.
Is, is probably pretty darn unheard of for what I personally think, and I know I'm biased, is one of the best darn programs around. But I just wanted to call out that it, ten percent feels like a big increase, but those rates have not been increased since the inception, correct? And we're really talking about roughly less than twenty dollars a day for an amazing preschool program for the, for the tuition side. And not many of our students are tuition, if I'm...
No.
The vast majority are...
No, and if, if our families really realized everything they should about the program and the bargain that it is for such a phenomenal program, I would think we would have people lining up, looking for a lottery to access seats in it.
Who knows what the future may bring? But I, I appreciate that we've kept those costs so low, and really, exceptional, amazing program. And I just wanted to call out how, how, what an incredible value it is. So people don't focus on the, the ten percent, which feels like a lot.
About those seats, are, have those numbers been the same? Have they gone up, or are we...
They kinda, they, they fluctuate, and obviously, things were different, you know, with COVID years because kids were receiving instruction remotely. So, I, I would hope that those numbers would increase. We also, part of that program is grant-funded, and so it's based on need, economic need. And so, they, those are blended, regular ed and special ed pre-K programs as well, so...
Any prediction that there'll be more seats, or will it be about the same, this, for the next year?
I don't have those figures yet from, from the staff about how many kids have shown, how many people have shown interest in the program on a tuition basis.
And Adina, from a parent perspective, they have to leave X number of spots open for kids that are in early intervention because on their third birthday, they can start in the program. So like, for instance, Max went to the program, his third birthday is the end of February. So he had to have a spot. By the state of Illinois requires him to have a spot in that program, that has to be there when he turns three. So there's a piece of like that fluctuating in the numbers, that's that.
I didn't, I just didn't know if there is, I know there's a limit, so I don't know if that limit is increased, or you wait to hear from a need perspective what it is first, is that...
Yeah, they're doing, they just did screenings now, at the, what, maybe a few weeks ago?
Yeah, a couple weeks ago.
And so, I don't know if they have all, everything fully slated yet for who's returning, or who might be new in the program.
Any other questions? Okay. We'll move on to item number three, which is stakeholder participation in board committees.
And so, later in the meeting, the board's gonna be reorganizing and selecting officers, and part of that process is also board members signing up for what committees they wanna serve on. And so our committees are the Finance Committee, Facility Committee, Public Relations Committee, Policy Committee, and Strategic Plan. This past year, Public Relations Committee, we, in addition to having admin and board members, we included some other stakeholders. And the, the consensus of the board was, they liked how that committee was working. And so it was suggested that the board have a discussion around our committees, and if they, you know, the board would like to see some of our other committees include stakeholders beyond admin and board as well.
I mean, I think, I think the more community members that are involved in our committees, the better off, the better decisions that we're gonna be able to make. And as part of like a really well-functioning board, the work of the board happens in committees. It shouldn't really be happening at the board table. And, and we're trying to get to be a really great, well-functioning board, so that we don't spend five hours at a board meeting. So, I think the more community members that are, that are open and involved, the better decisions we'll be able to make, and the, the better forming of a board that we'll be.
I, I wanna build upon what Leah just said, in terms of where the work happens. Because we've had a lot of, I don't know, because I've only been on the board for, for a little over a year, but it seems like we've had a lot of community involvement at board meetings, and maybe more than is, than is customary. And I, well, I, I think that's great. I think it's fantastic that, that, that the community be involved in board, or come and be listening to, paying attention to board meetings. The work happens in the committees. And what will improve things for everybody in this community, and all the stakeholders in this district, will be help, helping out with the work. And since the work happens in the, in the committees, I think that not only, not only would I say I would support having non-board members in these committees, I would, I would, I would beg, beg the community to be involved in these committees.
I have a question, Kim, probably this, you would be the best answer to this. I know our finance records are public a year after, that the public can dig in usually. I, I have dug in before becoming on this board. Isn't, isn't there some of our meetings in the Finance Committee that are a little sensitive, that we wouldn't necessarily have public stakeholders?
You, it depends on the topic. You could have them, you know, just with, you could do them both ways.
Okay, that's, I was just hoping that maybe we can have some public, some private, because I just realized there are some sensitive for future financing, so, okay, thank you.
Well, potentially, we could put a, we could put a closed session at the beginning or the end of a meeting.
Is that something?
Uh, the same exceptions would apply as a normal closed session, so we'd have to meet one of those thirteen.
Right, so it would be better to just, if you want, again, if we have more than three board, we have, if we have three board members or more, it's a public meeting. But if you were going to, I mean, typically, we only have two board members on those two committees. I would suggest different dates.
The other committee that I think, you know, so I'm one hundred percent in favor, I think as much community involvement as possible in these committees. The other one that might be an exception is the Policy Committee, because most of those policies come from the Illinois State Board of Ed. And so we don't really have much room for debate on those policies. And so I just don't know that it would be a productive use of community members' time to participate, but...
But knowing that, and being in the room when it gets said, no, this is not, this isn't up for debate, just knowing how this all works.
That's true, that's a fair point.
It, to me, is, is, because I, I, I'll say it, I mean, for me, coming on the board was, was a real eye-opener as to how things actually function.
Right.
How things actually get done is so, so different than the way it might seem if you're not involved. And so, I don't know, I mean, I'm not saying that, 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 that it, that we, we would get a lot of takers for the Policy Committee, knowing that you're gonna go there and just listen to how it's gonna be, kinda thing, most of the time.
Right, it's basically just approving how it's gonna be, but with a few exceptions.
Right.
But, so, I mean, I guess, now, now having heard that, if community members want to participate in that committee.
And maybe that's something we can do with like the descriptions of the committees. We could maybe flesh out the descriptions a little bit more so that it's clear, like, and we've talked about meeting dates, you know, and I know we've got the board calendar coming up here, and I asked you, Kevin, and, and you said you, you updated it, which is awesome. I asked for the applicable committee meetings to match up with our board calendar dates. So like, if it's September, what we do in that board meeting, because there are those things that we do kind of every September, it also is like, this is the month that, that committee for PR and Finance meets in September, too. So I think fleshing out some of that back-of-house stuff might help, you know, to really give folks a, a clear understanding of like, this is what this committee does.
Yeah. I think that's fair, and I think to both of your points, kinda demystifying what happens with the board is really important for the community. It's, there's nothing, you know, there's nothing magical necessarily, and the more people have insight and exposure to that, the better.
That was my thinking, like, it was more so like utilizing time of stakeholders. So I was, my primary thought was, you know, if there are committees, and I guess outlining what will be done, or your, a person's place in that committee should be lined out, that the areas where we use the most feedback and there's the most participations are the ones I wanted to highly push. I don't think that's for every committee, so I wasn't gonna push community involvement for policy and finance, because there are so many, if there are issues and what we can't speak about, I think we have to iron it out first before we offer that. So pushing those committees where we will have participation and, and hi, high, more high involvement and utilization of time, those are the committees that I think we should push ahead. And then just start to grow the other ones for involvement where they're sitting in and offering it.
Yeah.
So, to recap, we're saying that, let me make sure I, and correct me if I'm saying this wrong, what I think I'm hearing from you guys. All of the committees would be open for participation, but that, you know, we're, we will be very clear and transparent about the roles, and we know there are some committees that will have a more active community role. And then also, there might be some committees where that committee needs to have a board members-only type of meeting, if the content is sensitive, like the Finance Committee.
So, I, I would love to...
Adina, did I, did I capture what you were saying? Because I wanna make sure you were...
I think it's, what I was saying was maybe moving ahead with those, I guess figuring out the roles and where it would be, and not necessarily saying all of the committees are open right now, because it would be hard to, you know, that was where I was coming from, but how you expressed it and say like, they're all open and we'll let you know, that's, I'm okay with that also.
What do you guys think? Is prioritizing a few first?
I think, I think we open it up, we open it up. I think, don't make it more complicated than it needs to be. I mean, if I'm, like, if I'm thinking about signing up for like a Policy Committee versus like a Finance Committee, I'm probably going for Finance, but, because I just, you know, because like, it doesn't sound very interesting to me to do Policy just from the word. So, I just think, I, I think let's give our, you know, our community members, you know, the chance and the chance to make the best decision for themselves. And if they come for one meeting and they're like, well, this is not for me, right? I wanna check out the other one.
There's no, no, there's no contract.
It's not just open for their decision. We have to do things within policy for the board and ISBE. And if there's not a place for stakeholders in that committee, I think that's why we have to be careful and say, everything's open, you see how you feel. If there's, oh, you can come, but only for this part, oh, this meeting is out, I think that's confusing. So if we highlight these three, Public Relations, Facility Committees, and Strategic Planning, those are the ones we know. It's not confusing what you'll do, there are some meetings you can't, you can, here's the calendar. And we can push ahead with those, because there are not much limitations put on it, and it's not confusing.
That makes sense to me, it feels like eas, like cleaner, more straightforward. How, also, how do, how are people signing up for these? How are community members signing up?
In the past, we would send out a communication, and then, we probably, my guess is probably now on Google Form, and people would indicate which committees they would like to, which committees they'd like to serve on. But at, to Leah's point, you know, some of the descriptions can be fleshed out a little bit more. So they know, like the Policy Committee, it's, it's really gonna be more of a listening, observing, you know, because we get all of our policies are recommended by the School Board Association, which is through their legal team, and then we get input from our attorneys. So, a lot of it is, is already kind of more of a discussion, this is, the policy that's changing, the why it's changing, you know, versus brainstorming and, you know, problem-solving, which, you know, some of the other committees, that would be more of the role of a, of a stakeholder, so, but we can flesh that out in the descriptions.
So one thing that I think would also be super helpful, and, and I've seen this from, from getting people's commitment and buy-in, is let's getting some dates and some times for the school year, right? And, and getting that onto our regular meeting schedule and onto our, so that if I say I'm interested in the Facility Committee, which I think is a four-time-a-year committee, right? I know that I'm signing up for November twelfth at six PM, December seventeenth at six PM, April sixteenth at si... Like, I know, and I can put that on my calendar. And then they're set for the year in the same way that our, that our regular board meetings are. And I can, I know if I can commit to that, you know, and say like, I know what I'm signing up for. People like that understanding of what I'm signing up for. It's very helpful for making a decision.
And that, we will do that, you know, part of it is the transition. Andy Rely, our new business manager's here, so coordinating his calendar and some other, and, and in a moment, I'll be passing around for the board to sign up for their committees. So finding out typically what days, you know, evenings work for different people, and then we can start filling in those dates.
All right, so can we just go around the room real quick? Because I wanna make sure we have clarity on where everybody stands. We've got two options that have been discussed, having community stakeholder involvement in all five committees, Strategic Facilities, Finance, Policy, and PR. That's, let's call that option A. Option B is, we start with having community involvement in strategic planning, facilities, and public relations, and leave Finance and Policy as board only. So can we just go around the room and you guys weigh in on A, all committees? Or B, start with the three and leave the other two? And can we start, Jessica, are you?
Yeah, I mean, truly, I don't feel super strongly either way, but I guess logically, just the three feel most important for community involvement, so B.
Same, same for me, I'm, I'm not fussed one way or the other, but I would lean towards A, I would lean towards all.
I'm open to all, but I am leaning towards B.
I'm open to A, all. That's why I brought up the exception in Finance, that there may be some things that the public is not privy to.
I'm A, all, with an asterisk.
Okay. So fantastic, we're split down the middle. I think we try, we, because I'm more of the three, but I'm also, I think everybody sounds like they're pretty flexible. I would say, let's, let's, can we agree that we'll try all of them? And if we find, with the strong descriptions, if we find it's not working, we can always adjust from there?
That's fine.
Yes. Okay, great. Number four, anything else on that topic before we move on?
So I just had a question then, and this is more of a like, technical procedural? So we are approving our board calendar for next year tonight. When we get through the process of scheduling everything, do we then update that board calendar with these meetings on it, or would this be a separate calendar?
No, we can, we can update the, the calendar with these, these committee meetings on it.
Okay, and then just kind of making the understanding that like, we're doing this this year late, but.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then before we move on to the next topic, these are for board members to select their, their committees. So I've got one sheet to go one direction and one sheet to go the other direction.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the board meeting topic calendar.
So I've included, we do this at the, when we're starting a new board year. We're, with approving the calendar, that's what we're basically doing. And so I included for you a calendar that shows you by month, the topics that typically you will see. So when the board approves the budget, the levy, some of those things. And obviously there's other topics that, depending upon what's going on in the district, they end up on the agenda. But as Leah suggested, I also added one more column to, right now, give you an idea which months the committees will be meeting. And then we'll fine-tune that with the actual dates going forward. And then a couple, what we'll try to do as well, we, we did this in the past when we had a lot of committees working. We'd have committees meeting periodically, but then there were a couple of times a year, we brought all the committees together on one night. And they would have their own meeting, but then you would bring them together to kind of share out and update all the other committees on what their work was doing. Naturally, there's overlap, for instance, with facilities and finance. You know, you need money to handle facility issues, and so that really helped. And so there's some natural times when that will occur. And that will also be included in the calendar as well. We refer to as our Joint Committee Night. And that's when we bring all the committees together to kind of share out what's happening.
That sounds wonderful, and it sounds like a really wonderful kind of natural piece as we talk about keeping our strategic plan updated, you know, and, and really keeping our fingers on the pulse of what's going on. That's awesome, thank you.
Sorry, sorry. What's happening? Okay, anything else on the board meeting topic calendar? All right, we're moving into action items. Number one is the approval of the student handbook changes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the recommended revisions, including the changes discussed tonight to the Elementary, Junior High, and High School 2022-2023 Student Handbook as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Okay. Number two is the approval of the authority for additional May 2022 expenditures. The Chair will entertain a motion to authorize and direct the Treasurer to pay any bills received in May 2022 that have been budgeted for the 2022 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes. Number three, approval of consolidated district plan for title grants. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consolidated district plan for title grants as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
And number four, Title I School-Wide Plan for Manning. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the school-wide Title I Plan for J.T. Manning Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Okay, number five, approval of Title I School-Wide Waiver. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the Title I School-Wide Waivers for Miller-Manning, Westmont Junior High, and Westmont High School.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Okay, and number six, approval of 2022-2023 student fees. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the 2022-2023 school fees as presented.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Okay, Kevin, you have a superintendent's report?
A couple items from my report. First is a congratulations to Westmont High School Principal Jack Baldeman. Jack is the recipient of the Golden Apple Award for School Leadership. There are over 100 Illinois school leaders that were nominated. And Jack was named one of two principals in the state of Illinois to be the recipient by the Golden Apple Committee. And so congratulations to Jack and, you know, his team and all the great things that are happening at our high school. And then one other item, just a reminder to the board, in November is the, referred to as the Tri-A Conference, but it's the Illinois, we refer to as the Illinois School Board Convention. And the registration opens the first week of June. And so the real tricky part is hotel accommodations. So if you are planning on attending the conference this year and, and/or need a hotel for the conference, if you could let Shannon know so that we can complete the registration for the board members.
We should let Shannon know before June 1st, or what do you?
It, it's June 6th, I believe.
Before that time.
You're right, before June 6th.
I'll send an email.
That's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any board reports?
I'm going to go again, as always, if anybody doesn't have anything to say. Congratulations to the Westmont High School seniors, they had their prom. I heard it was a great time, so congrats, you guys. Congrats to the Westmont Junior High School eighth graders, they had their dance this past Friday. I didn't know what to expect, I always anticipate chaos from teenagers, but I chaperoned and it was a blast. They had lots of fun. Everybody's always afraid that they're not going to dance, they were all over the floor and picking out the hits from when they were born, I think. But like, it was great, it was a great time. On that note, I'd also like to send out congrats to the first graders at Miller for transitioning to the big school. And the fifth graders, we have their celebration next Friday, their celebratory picnic. And they're heading off to the junior high. Aside from that, things that I forgot to say last time, I have in my notes. Wanted to send out a congratulations to Amy Quattrone and Westmont because they were just awarded the Reaching Out and Building Bridges Award for doing good stuff in the community. Amy works with the whole village and the businesses where these kids work on their SSLC hours. And they work together for doing things in the community. And what's the word I'm looking for? Besides community service, it's just having interactions and learning how the things work. So congratulations to them. And congratulations to Coach Sherry, my son's volleyball coach. Brian Sherry won the Westmont Chambers Educator of the Year Award. So all that stuff's been going on, so yeah. Congrats.
Awesome, thanks, Ange. I wanted to just quickly say, in echoing of Ms. Chapinski's comments, I think we had some really tremendous parent support for teacher appreciation. And thank you to all of the PTOs and all of the parents who stepped up to do that. Including, I know, many fellow board members put in a lot of time towards that as well, so, thank you. The other thing, I just want to say congratulations to staff and students on what we know was a challenging but successful school year. And congratulations to our graduates coming up here in a week, so it's very exciting. Any other board reports? Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is we have procedural action items, the election of officers. We are going to be tonight appointing a president, vice president, and secretary for a one-year term. And the first election is for president. So the Chair will entertain nominations for president. And the Chair is going to nominate. So this past year, we have been doing a lot of cross-training of roles. And Adina Hoover has been attending the meetings for preparation for the board meetings. And she has also stepped in to lead a few board meetings. I think she's extremely well-prepared to be the next president of the school board. And I am honored to nominate Adina Hoover as president.
Second.
Any, any other nominations? Okay, so the Chair will entertain a motion to appoint Adina Hoover as president for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Okay, so the Chair will entertain nominations for vice president.
I want to nominate Jess Redonia.
Great nomination. Any other nominations? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to appoint Jess Redonia as vice president for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Okay, now the Chair will entertain motions, nominations for secretary.
I would like to nominate Ange Steckedy for secretary.
Another great nomination. Any other nominations? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to appoint Ange Steckedy as secretary for a one-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Great, so now at this time, do we switch into our new roles?
Yeah, it should be, it should be Adina.
Do you have the sheet?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move along in our agenda and move to appointment of board committees. Oh, we've, you've passed that around.
Just filling in.
Inside the signup sheet.
Yeah.
Next, establishment of board meeting dates, times, and places. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting of the Community Unit School District 201 Board of Education be held as identified on the Notice Schedule of Regular Meetings of the Board of Education of Community Unit School District 201 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Moving on to appointment of ISBE representative. Chair will entertain a motion, well, ISBE will take nominations for that.
Yeah, if there's anybody who's interested.
Okay. If I'm reading this correctly, you are representative as a delegate, so this would happen at the conference? Is this the only time?
Yes.
So much experience, thanks, Ange.
I know, it was fun, it was fun, I'll do it, I nominate myself.
You can do that.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Angela Steckedy as the Community Unit School District 201's Illinois Association of School Board Delegate.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
So right now, we don't have any other public comments, you don't have any slots. Future meetings and events, so yay, Elementary Talent Show will be May 20th, 6:00 PM at Westmont High School. The Westmont High School graduation will be May 24th at 7:00 PM at Westmont High School. And I believe that's right, currently it's outdoors, is that in the field?
Correct.
A Westmont Junior High School graduation, May 26th, 7:00 PM at Westmont High School. There's no school on Memorial Day, May 30th. And the last day of school is scheduled for June 1st. And then our next CUSD 201 board meeting is June 21st here at Village Hall. At this time, we move to adjournment. The Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the May 17th, 2022 regular meeting of the Board of Education.
So moved.